Where it's currently located.
So the container, as it's currently located on site, was purpose designed for the storage of the material that's inside. It's located in a safe area on the site, protected from like traffic incidents or any other, sorry, any other hazards from outside the property, I suppose. It's located in close proximity to the existing chlorine facility in the plant itself, which minimizes both travel distance for material, and it's also in an optimal location to allow staff to safely handle the material that needs to get loaded in and out.
Director Bax.
So relocating this structure would increase the distance that the staff would have to travel with the material in question, would it not?
Over to staff.
So the material, once it's loaded into the container, is actually pumped through tubing into refill the interior containers inside the building. But moving the container makes loading the new material into it more challenging based on its location closer to the building, provides more difficult angles and less easy access via the loading truck and stuff like that to get the material in and out. It does increase the distance of piping that the material would have to move through to refill the tanks.
Follow up. And so this material, although it's stated that it's of a less, it's not as strong as consumer available bleach, it still would make things more difficult and thereby creating more of a hazard, would it not?
Ideally, anytime you're pumping liquid, the shortest distance between two points is the best option. So minimizing the amount of pipe that we have would be an ideal situation. Not to correct the committee member, but the material that's used in that location is roughly equivalent to the household bleach, which is reduced in concentration from what we use at a lot of our other plants.
I'm just going to ask a follow-up on that. So the pumping distance, is there any difference between relocating the storage unit or building, purpose-built, outbuilding?
If we're getting really detailed, we could probably reduce in part the distance by building a new one compared to relocating the existing. But compared to the increase in distance that either one of those two options would create, compared to keeping it where it is, that difference might be considered negligible.
Thank you. Director Stamford.
Is the storage unit currently hooked up? Is there piping currently connecting to the main pump house?
As I understand it, when the facility is in operation, it's currently connected. I don't know if the staff have left that connected at this point. So I'll turn that over to Mr. Rosenbaum.
Thanks. I confirmed yesterday that it is still activated. I confirmed yesterday that it's still hooked up, that it's still connected.
Director Stamford, do you have further? Oh, Director Toth.
Thank you, Chair. Not a question for staff, but a comment. And having been at this table for the entire process of the Church Road project, I think it's a safe thing to say that it didn't really go according to the original plan. And I recognize the ease of using the container to sort of solve the issue of the building deficiency, like in the design process. But I also, I'm also willing to acknowledge the impact that this project has had on the neighborhood. And when you look at option one, or you look at option two, for basically, basically the same price, we can actually have something that sort of blends in a bit better than just moving a shipping container around the corner. I'm actually going to move option two.
I'm going to go over to Director Stamford, since this is her area.
I won't move it, then.
So there.
Thank you. I had it all planned out. I didn't talk to you. So I have just a couple of statements. It's three or four minutes long, and then I'm going to move an option for your consideration. First of all, just a quick comment about the report. There was a statement in there that there hasn't been a lot of commentary or activity or concern from the community since February. And that's not because they didn't, they're not still concerned, it's because we told them to back off. We will be looking into this. And so they've been very patient and not continued to agitate. But it doesn't mean that it isn't still a concern for them. So I just want to thank everybody for agreeing to revisit this question. I know this is not the standard procedure for how we do projects, how we budget things. And I also really appreciate the staff spending the time to compile how these options, what the implications of these options are, because I think that was a lot of where our questions were. Could we just move it? Could we just do this? There was a lot more to it, obviously. And I think it was unclear to the neighbors as well. I've heard from several residents in Area F. I sent you all a correspondence. They go into detail about what their specific concerns are. Generally, everyone was united in their preference for small, permanent, additional building to the principal pump house structure. And I just want to just reiterate a bit of the history here. When the Church Road well expansion project was initiated last term, it was an ambitious undertaking for the regional district. Expanding wells and installing a state-of-the-art pumping facility in a steep, challenging area under tight timelines, while addressing a growing regional water supply shortage, it was no small feat. The work involved digging up roads, laying pipe, building one of the coast's oldest communities, and all during a pandemic. It was a significant disruption for the neighborhood, which was particularly, was already grappling with other issues such as road erosion, flooding, parking issues, lighting, and the list goes on for grand thoms. By the spring, the priority was understandably to get those wells online in time for the potential summer shortages, water shortages. However, the structure and the hypochlorate appeared before any communications to the neighbors, and it was not made clear whether the CCAN was the temporary or permanent solution. Throughout this period, the neighbors remained patient. It wasn't until the celebrations around the new water source had concluded, construction had moved on, that it became evidence the CCAN was going to be the permanent idea. In February of this year, the community be reasonably asked why the CCAN couldn't be relocated to a less conspicuous location or replaced with a permanent addition. We now have a clear understanding of what those options entail. So two things that I want to really consider as a board. While the current storage unit may be safe, it does not comply with surrounding zoning regulations for this residential area. A CCAN require variance permits, et cetera, that we would expect the same due diligence of any other residents proposed placing one in their neighborhood. And when the S C R D undertakes a project in a community, it should complete its work and leave the neighborhood in as good, or if not better, condition than it found it. Our reputation with people we serve is vital, and maintaining their trust is essential on our long-term success as an organization. The current situation may be safe and cheap, but it does not make it the right one. I ask the board to consider option two, that a permanent addition to the primary pump house be included in the budget deliberations, and that the regional water function be considered as the appropriate funding source to support the completion of the project. Do I have a second?
And I see a second, surprise. All right. Discussion would, the funding source originally was going to be what? Can somebody remind me?
It is indicated in the report on page two. It is Community Building Works Funds for Area E.
Ah, that was for the landscaping, but I.
Regional Water.
Yeah, okay. C A O.
So what is not outlined in the report, just because we wanted to understand what the direction was, financially, we will reconcile the old project, and if there is a change, of course, we will repatriate those funds back to the original source of funding. So we'll return them or provide options as far as abandoning the original scope, because we wouldn't proceed, we haven't actioned it. So those would likely go back, so we will, through the pre-budget process, likely bring forward some housekeeping related to that. And then the new budget proposal will provide options related to funding. One of the options, obviously, would be the existing service, which is regional water.
Thank you. Director Bax.
Yes, and I'm very interested in seeing what the other funding options would be, considering that this, I did some quick and dirty math, and this has cost me personally about $15, which is not, you know, it's not a hell of a lot of money to worry about. And Director Stamford makes a very compelling argument.
Thank you. I am not going to verify your math. Are there any further questions about the motion, or I'm seeing no further discussion? Director Gabius.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'm struggling with this item. I think that, I can, I, thank you for the statement, that clarified a lot of things for me. It has been, obviously, a difficult project for the neighborhood from the beginning. I do think that staff, you know, made the best decision they could at the time, and they found a cost-effective way to deal with an emerging issue. And I, you know, that's something that I expect staff to do. And the solution is safe, it is economical, and it is doing what it's meant to do right now. What I'm, I also hear the concerns from the residents and the frustration, and, you know, they're not currently happy with the state of things. What I'm concerned about is that we do have projects that have been on the books for years that need to be addressed. We have a lot of competing priorities. This is not an insignificant amount of money. So I'm, although I realize that, you know, this, there, a more permanent solution would be appreciated by the residents, I think, I'm not sure that I could make this a priority in the upcoming budget year. So I'm struggling with this. I guess, you know, if option two goes forward, there's also the budget proposal where we could have a look where this falls into the corporate work plan and what will have to be deprioritized in order to address this. But yeah, it's a tough one.
Thank you, Director Gabius. Director Lee.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I, I've driven past the site several times, and a little shocked to see the container standing so proud in the neighborhood. I kind of thought it was going to be behind the building. It was a good interim solution, but I think, I wouldn't call the project completed until we had a building that was designed to service the purpose and not have a container in a residential area like this. If we had the container up in South Pender Harbor, out in where our water treatment plant is, oh, sure, why not? But not in a residential area like this. It was a heck of a good solution, a nice, safe solution, and it caught us the water. You'll notice we didn't go past stage two here. But I think the project isn't finished until the permanent solution is there. As far as I'm concerned, the project's still open. It has a priority, and we do projects one at a time. We complete the project, and then we move on to the next one. So I have no problem with our staff working on this if the board so decides, because I think it's still an ongoing project that hasn't been completed. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate too, Director Stamford's taking us back to where we were tearing our hair out a few years ago, trying desperately to get this project online, and it just seemed like there was one thing after another, after another. It was, it was kind of epic. And now it's working, and it's easy to forget where we were. I appreciate the number of projects that are standing in line, because that is a huge problem, particularly in infrastructure. But I think we can revisit it at the budget time. And if we're going to do this, we should do it properly, not just move the shipping container. I'm also relieved to hear that we could reuse the shipping container elsewhere. Repair, reuse, recycle. Over to Director Toth.
Thank you, Chair. And I guess the one thing to note here is that this is a project that's not going to be done by, you know, February or March. It is still going to take a year or two to get it sorted out. And so the neighborhood is going to have to be patient with us just a little bit longer. But hopefully, if this passes, and if something passes at budget, that that buys us a little bit of space with that neighborhood. Because, yeah, they were quite clear about what their impacts were, and I think, I think it's okay for us to admit that we didn't quite get it right. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any further hands. I will note that the voting is everyone except Gibsons. So I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? And that's two opposed, and would you like that recorded? Sure. Thank you very much. So we can move on to item 4.2, which is agreement with the Town of Gibsons for geographic mapping services. Yeah. Okay, I'm just going to take a two-minute pause here. And we're back. And over to Manager Nelson.
Thank you, Chair. This report seeks direction on options towards renewal of a mapping services agreement with the Town of Gibsons. Staff at both the Town of Gibsons and the S C R D are satisfied with the execution of the current five-year agreement, which expires at the end of this year. Staff recommend renewal at similar terms for another five years. Happy to answer any questions, Chair.
Thank you. And one of the things that taxpayers are always complaining about is that we are duplicating services by having so many local governments, but this is an example where we are sharing our services, which makes sense to me. So, Director Dan.
Thank you. I appreciate the report. I mean, it's obvious that this is a win-win situation for both of us and for the public, because one of the things that is clear, standardization of data is an issue in many industries, tourism, health, and we can look at, and that's usually the problem. And I'm appreciative when you can have some consistent data, and it's a platform that everybody can work from and make things way easier. So I'm totally in favor, and I would like to move option one.
Thank you. And there's a second. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, I'm calling the question. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Everybody voted in favor, so I don't have to call for opposition. Director Toth.
Thank you, Chair. Not relevant to the motion, but something I did want to sort of follow on this with. I think it's a good point. You know, when we've got as many governments on the Sunshine Coast as we do, any opportunities for shared services, for, you know, fee-for-service between each other, it really is a win-win for everybody. And I think it's something that I wish we did more of, and I look forward to, you know, continued conversations in the months and years ahead on things that we can do more of together, whether it's fee-for-service or whether it's just shared services. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, staff. All right. Next up on the agenda is 4.3, Coastal Flood Mapping Project Report, which was huge. Boy, are those files big. Tons of information. And over to Manager Shay for an introduction.
Thank you, Chair. We are pleased to, we have a slide that we're going to be, we have just a few slides to help maybe ground the very large quantity of information. We were testing our eScribe system off the get-go. So, yeah, we're very pleased to present the results of what we think was a significant project that was fully grant-funded in partnership with other local governments to help us better understand the hazards of sea level rise and coastal flooding. Okay. So just briefly, sea level rise is happening as we're burning fossil fuels, that's creating warming of the planet. And most of the sea level rise is actually coming from thermal expansion of the water. As the water gets warmer, those little molecules spread out from one another, and that's causing a lot of the sea level rise. And then the other primary driver is the melting glaciers, which primarily those above ground are contributing additional water into the ocean. Now, what are we planning for? The B C guidelines state that we should plan for 0.5 meters by 2050 and 1 meter by 2100. And because these driving mechanisms are slow-moving, we've already locked into additional sea level rise. How quickly we reduce our global carbon pollution really will impact the rate of that rise, and how quickly it would happen, but we know it's going to be happening. With that being said, it's also a very slow process. So the project results show that we have time to plan ahead, but also reinforce that the process should start now. And trying to think about, or imagine what this will look like, it is a slow process, and we can imagine that the highest king tides that we see today, this was in December 2024, will be the regular high tide, and, you know, by about 2050. There we go. But for the specific scenarios that, the coastal flooding scenarios that we're talking about of concern, what we need is multiple things to happen at the same time. And all these things have their own likelihood of happening. So the first is high tide, which we know is quite predictable. Similarly, with the storm surge, Environment and Climate Change Canada is getting quite good at predicting those. Then we have the wind and wave action, which is increasing in frequency. And for the models here that we were working with, the direction also matters. So they've done a bunch of wind and wave modeling to take the worst-case scenarios. And then finally, we have that underlying pressure of sea level rise, which is exacerbating the concerning trends of above. So what was the project about? The project had three primary components, updated flood mapping. And you can see from the little map on the left here that we were the last region in the area to undertake detailed coastal flood mapping. The other one was a coast flood management policy brief, which looked primarily at land use planning. And finally, we had some initial community outreach to raise awareness about this hazard. So the policy recommendations report, it's one of those attachments in the big pile of attachments, but briefly, the most important thing to note here is that all the local governments involved are already regulating development in coastal areas exposed to flooding hazard. We're already doing what we need to do. There are, however, some recommendations for improvements, and these recommendations focused on these areas here. One, for example, was updating our development permit areas is a very high opportunity for supporting a more resilient community. There's also opportunities to align policies and create a more consistent and transparent landscape across the entire region. This could improve navigation and clarity with things like the guidance on the types of structures that are exempt from development permit requirements, or guidance on the definitions for what is a qualified professional. And then finally, there were some recommendations also on mainstreaming coastal flood adaptation throughout our O C Ps. So this is a perfect example of an area where our O C P renewal project can, is an opportunity to start implementing some of these recommendations. I'll just do a quick overview of what the maps are. The first set of maps that we created were inundation maps. And this represents where will the water be at a very high tide with a storm surge, so it's not permanently inundated. We've done a bunch of different scenarios for zero meters, which is current day, 0.5 meters, 1 meter, and 2 meter. From the pictures you see here, you can see, like, there's no wave action in these pictures. This is where the storm surge and the high tide is pushing the water up. And as the water recedes, so does the ocean water. So this is an example of what that map looks like. Each line of purple represents a different sea level rise scenario, and you can turn these on and off in our G I S viewer. Yeah, so the, as obviously as the sea level rises, the lines go further back. We are just doing some analysis on all these numbers, and we found that about 7% of the coast that's parceled for development or is developed is affected by the 0-meter line. And that goes up to 9% with the 0.5 meter. And that 75% of that area is in Area A, Area B, and District of Seashells. And that stat stays consistent as we talk about higher levels of, you know, the 0.5-meter sea level rise. So these maps are really useful when we are starting to think about asset management. The 0 and the 0.5-meter sea level rise can be helpful when we're reviewing capital plans, which we're doing on a multitude of fronts at this time. The 2-meter sea level rise is really far out into the future. So that's more useful when we're starting to think about, where do we want to orient our communities and our neighborhoods in the future, so that we're resilient and we don't create maladaptations? The other map we did was the flood construction levels maps. So what we're doing here is we're adding that wave effect and the freeboard. The freeboard is a safety buffer, and this is all based on the 1-meter sea level rise scenario. As the wave hits a hard surface, it goes up, and all that energy can bring the water further in. So there's different ways of getting to the flood construction level. At the base, it's the long-term design water level, which includes freeboard, and that's that blue line that you can see on our maps. And in most cases, when we add the wave effect to it, we'll have that purple polygon that goes a little bit further inland. In a very limited number of cases, there's a high land area on the shore that dissipates that wave energy. So the design water level and mostly the freeboard are the line of interest. And then the final map that we did was coastal vulnerability index maps. And this is essentially a proxy indicator for erosion susceptibility. And it also is a summary map in one of the attachments, so you can get a quick look at the entire Sunshine Coast to get a sense of where those red areas are. But essentially, if you think about a bedrock shoreline, when it's getting exposed to all those waves that it hasn't been exposed to in the past, it's going to be a lot more resistant compared to fine sediment. So thank you very much. We're happy to share this, and happy to take any questions, should you have any.
Thank you. I'm just going to comment a little bit, since I note on page 13 that 94% of the shoreline in Elphinstone is at high risk from sea level rise. Boy, do I have lots of questions about that. We're, so the report gives us a bunch of recommendations around policy and so forth, and we are also going to forward this information to other agencies, but I guess I. going to forward this information to other agencies. But I guess I am interested in who will take actions based on the information in these reports? There isn't, for instance, most of Elphinstone, although at risk, is residential properties. It's not public infrastructure for the most part, other than, of course, Ocean Beach Esplanade. But is there an identification of which critical public infrastructure is at high risk? And who would use this information to identify that?
Thank you, Chair. The, what staff proposed here is to dive into that, that more of the risk assessment. This is a, developing our understanding of the hazards. So as we dive into the risk assessment, we'll be able to better understand the impacts on our own assets. There's also, as you mentioned, assets that are owned by other agencies that are of critical nature. So we'd love to to share this information and make sure that it's brought up to their, to their attention. On the private property side of things, private property owners are responsible for their own properties. So what we are working towards is some, you know, workshops with the Stewardship Council of B C for some green shores, capacity building, and trying to offer some tools and learning opportunities so that property owners that are affected can look at different ways to mitigate the hazard. And we'll be announcing those green shores workshops in the coming weeks or month.
Thank you. So I'm going to, I see Director Inkster and then Alternate Director Dan Dred.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Through to staff. Thank you for the continuous reports on climate change that you're providing to us. In your report, it has a number of logos from the municipalities. So I'm assuming the reports and/or the discussion of those reports as you compile the information is with the municipalities on a regular basis, based on the logos there? Is that, is that just one of my first question? Thank you, Chair. Just an assumption.
Staff?
Thank you. The grants that we jointly applied for had us as the manager of the grant. But we had a steering committee comprised of members of all the local governments identified here. And Shishal Nation had already completed their coastal flooding mapping in 2022. So we've been meeting regularly with staff at all the local governments.
Okay, great. Thanks, Chair. That's really good to hear. As I've mentioned a number of times, I, my big concern for us and and I'm glad to hear, to see and to hear that the prediction of rise is, other than the storm surge and the wave action, is less than what we sometimes hear at our table. Not from me, because I've done my research. But I'm glad to, I'm glad to see the further discussion on this and the continuous presentation. My concern is the highway system. And I'll just say that because it means, the good thing is the hospital's safe for a long time. Let's be clear about that. But I'm, what I'm concerned about, and I'll always talk about this, is Davis Bay and Wharf Road and Seashelt. So when the, so the water will come up to that now. I'm not sure how we can fix those things because that means that we're gonna have to raise a lot of things or build the berming system and the green shores that you're talking about. We, I hope that's part of the discussion, how we're going to react to it. But that's my concern. So if Davis Bay is a concern, then the bridge is a concern. So my concern is communications and movement of people over the next number of years, but we have time. My thought is with those concerns being laid out is that what we have to do as a community is continue to, as we have over the last 50 years, continue to build infrastructure. And you showed the ferry terminal, they're just gonna have to start making a plan to move backwards. So after they get us an extra boat, they're gonna have to redo the terminal plan and work on that. So we're gonna have to just keep talking about this and put a plan together to keep, to start rebuilding some infrastructure to meet the challenges. Thanks.
Thank you, Director. And next, Alternate Director Dan Dred.
Thank you. I just want to share how things are done in Gibson's because we already set up the minimum flood plane as 15 meters. And anything on the forshore has to go through geotechnical D P As, environmental, and the aquifer. And if the private owner would like to do less than 50 meters, 15 meters, sorry, he has to come with a report from the geoengineer. And obviously, it comes to council if council agrees or not. And then on top of that, a covenant is established. So taking all the responsibility. So this is one step. We may evolve with this work here, but that's as we are doing right now.
Thank you. Director Toth.
Thank you, Chair. I'm, in the agenda review process, I didn't do a deep dive into the maps and the report. So that's, that's on me. I will admit that. However, the G I S layers are live. And oh, boy, is that a fantastic tool to poke around in. I remember Manager Shay, some years ago, last term, you presented sort of a basic concept map of what sea level rise might look like. And that was using data that I think came out of the United States primarily. And I know that we've got members in our community who absolutely latched on to that data, even though it was only conceptual. And so it had parts of Seashelt underwater by 2030, just because of the nature of the way that data was generated. And so with this tool, you know, any resident, any, anybody in our community can, can jump into the S C R D maps and they can see what that impact is going to look like for them with varying levels. You know, if you turn on the 2-meter sea level rise and you look at downtown Seashelt, there's only like a half-block width where the inlet and the ocean don't connect. But, you know, 2-meter rise is thankfully a long ways away. But there is gonna be significant impact for Seashelt, even with a 1-meter rise or a half-meter rise. And so, yes, you know, Davis Bay, the highway, Chapman Bridge, those are big concerns. I, intuitively, I sort of felt like with the sea wall and whatnot in downtown Seashelt, that downtown Seashelt would be mostly protected. And so it's really interesting to see where the vulnerability is from, like through the marsh, from the inlet. And so it's places that you don't really even think about that become vulnerable. So thank you to staff for all of this work. And, and yeah, I look forward to sharing this out with my community because everybody should see it. Everybody should see how it's gonna impact them and, you know, their children and their future generations. Thanks.
Thank you. Director Stamford.
Thank you. Incredible piece of work. I feel like I've now had a degree in geology and geography, which I always wanted anyways. One of the things I, like, one of the things I was pointing out with the terminal, like, so specific areas I've been, I looked at, it was interesting to note that the terminal has sort of a berm that helps keep the water back. And they'll probably keep working on that kind of methodology. But when I look at the data and I keep seeing that, that 1-meter sea level rise, I feel that if, unless people understand the additional impacts of storm surge and wave action and other impacts, they keep focusing on that one number. And they, they don't really pay attention to the implications of that. They're like, oh, 1 meter, no big deal. You know, that's, that's how they view this. But it's, I'm wanting to know if there's a way of communicating the urgency of managing our own waterfront, either as private landholders or as communities, that this is impacting us. It'll continue to incrementally and exponentially impact our shorelines and all the infrastructure around the shore. And unless we can get that communication out, I think people will always be kind of sliding back to, ah, 1 meter, who cares? Because that's the impression that I'm getting from my community. So looking for ways to get that message out, that that 1 meter is really the message we're trying to focus on. It's the overall impact of what that 1 meter means is the important part of this. So that's a long-winded diatribe, but that's where I'm at.
Thank you. I'm gonna jump in again on this. This is, it's interesting because of our legacy of glaciation has really impacted the coast. So quite apart from having large gravel mines and the, the upside of all these sand and gravel deposits is wonderful aquifers. But the downside is that we have some very vulnerable places. Take North Thurmanby Island, which is basically a sandbar from the last ice age. But even Elphinstone, you have areas that look like they're pretty solid. But if you actually poke at them, they're just sand and gravel. And the washout of Whittaker Creek, I think was a wonderful case in point. The resulting cavern is almost, the walls are almost completely vertical because it's just sand, gravel, and clay. And so we are very vulnerable. One of the many questions I have going forward, what all these local governments collaborated on this report, but going forward, how are the local governments and agencies going to collaborate in managing the risks that we're facing? Is there a, is there a forum? Is there a, are we doing this ad hoc or is there a way forward? And who's, who's steering this ship? C A O.
Yeah, thank you. And staff most certainly can, can add on. We have many projects on the go that I think facilitates further collaboration amongst their local governments. We have their hazard risk and vulnerability assessment. We have evacuation route planning. We have multiple projects associated with emergency management that we're working on. So we're also collaborating again on O C Ps and making referrals. And definitely, I know staff are working closely or closer than we have for many years in technical working groups, et cetera. So I think all of these projects allow us to do that. What's envisioned as far as like a committee in future, I think that those will be conversations that local governments will be having pretty soon in the sense of, do we have a type of policy structure or a policy group that talks about these things? But more decisions to come. Not formalized quite yet, but I think there's recognition we need to move towards that.
Right. With leadership from the province, she said pointedly. Director Inkster next, then I have Alternate Director Dan Dred.
Thanks again, Chair. So we've talked about, and I, I've been a broken record on a number of issues since elected this time. One of them's climate change, but also forest fires. My concern with that, it's all climate change-related, heat. And then on the other side, too, a lot of water. So what I would hope that we can talk about somehow is, and it's mentioned in the report, but I don't, I'm looking for projects as adaptation. You know, mitigation and adaptation, because that's what we now need to move to because we can't seem to meet the targets for our G H Gs. That's just a complete joke. Nevertheless, so we have to adapt. We have to adapt locally. We all know that we don't inherit this planet. We borrow it from our children. But even that having been said, my children probably won't be around when the 1-meter kicks in. It's just that far ahead. However, we need to prepare. I really would somehow like to see some projects identified, not for us to necessarily spend some money on, put planning together and then not sit on a shelf so they get revisited. I'd love to see, like I said, the green shores. And, and we might even have to start talking about in Seashelt about our Martian, whether we should dredge it. Things like that in order to create a, because that, I mentioned, that's our sponge in Seashelt. A lot of people don't realize until they go to Seashelt, that's our water sponge. And we might have to, have to start talking about adaptation downtown, green shores on the front end of Wharf and deal with the sponge. And everyone says, why do you keep talking about downtown Seashelt? And why do you keep talking about Wharf? Well, guess what? If that floods, which it could if we don't prepare for it, if, say, Director Lee gets the Fountain of Youth, he's, and then Justine Gabius get the Fountain of Youth, they can't come to meetings. This is how key downtown Seashelt is. So for the Sunshine Coast. So we just need to start identifying some projects and start talking about them because there's a number of things that we need to consider doing or we're gonna be underwater in some key places. Thanks.
Thank you. Director Dan, Dan Dred.
Thank you. This has to do with the recommendation. The first one, which is the project we refer to municipalities with an offer to present to councils. I don't know if council has to accept the offer, but I find this completely necessary that this is presented in council because not only councilors can better understand, but the public also watch the council meetings. So I don't know if we need to change, but I, maybe I'm already accepting on behalf of Gibson's council. I think this is mandatory. And the second thing, we discuss about education, awareness. I mean, it's important that the public understand for several reasons, including supporting any project, right? And I wonder as well if, because identify opportunities, this is a recommendation for opportunities for policy and regulatory alignment, but also communication, education, which goes back also to having a single message and also saving resource because we, if we are actually just the comment that Director Toth mentioned about how much, you know, when we do together. So instead of each, because eventually each municipality might take slightly different direction because they also have other projects. I think this is important to be very coordinated. So I support anything in this regard. I don't know if the board feels the recommendations need to be amended or this is sufficient. But that's the way I envision this going forward. We need to be like coordinated. I think it's very important in every single way.
Thank you. Because we are all dependent on infrastructure we don't control, such as the ferry terminals, which tend to be at sea level for some reason. And the highway, which unfortunately is also at sea level in places. I just wanted to note that of, of all the areas covered, the highest one, the highest risk ranked at 11, the Coastal Vulnerability Index score was Bonnybrook Beach by some considerable margin. So I hope that when we are looking at areas that we perhaps prioritize attention to the areas that are at highest risk. As amply illustrated by the lovely Karen Graves photo, Ocean Beach Esplanade is already flooding. And so we, we have a real challenge there. It's not our road. It's the Ministry of Transportation, of course. But we have an interest in the area and we have a park. In fact, two parks there. So interesting challenge. Director Gabius.
Thank you, Chair. I just first want to move the recommendations on page one of item 4.3 with, I think, the understanding that a presentation, we don't need to amend this, these recommendations, and a presentation can be offered to councils from our neighbor municipalities.
I see that was seconded.
Okay, perfect. And just a couple of comments and a question. Thank you so much for all this work. This is an incredible tool for residents, but also for us for our decision-making. And when we're talking about S C R D assets, it's gonna be very useful. Very excited to hear about green shore workshops coming up. Waiting for that announcement with bated breath. And speaking of green shores, I'm wondering what, how, how will green shores be incorporated in the, in the work at the S C R D when we're talking about parks like Bonnybrook, Cooper's Green? Are we, are we gonna see some green shores happen in our parks?
Great question. And with the launch of the Park Service Review, the timing seems really nice. Is that within scope? Do we know? C A O.
That's a very specific recommendation would be an implementation. That's a very specific recommendation would be an implementation out of the service review. So because that project has just launched, there is a couple of phases to it, too. So before jumping to, you know, what mitigation strategies or implementation, we first have to do this first iteration, which is identifying, you know, risks. And so this is very timely to help inform that process, so it's good.
Yes, and I also am aware that there are various other risks. Like until 10 years ago, all of our emergency planning was focused on earthquakes. And that has dropped out of our immediate attention. But people who perhaps live on a sandy isthmus between two bodies of water, which is prone to liquefy in an earthquake, might be concerned about it.
She's talking about us.
Yes. And so these risks are interrelated. Another item of considerable concern, I think, on waterfronts is the amount of logging debris in our waters. These logs are not natural. This is industrial debris that has washed up on our shorelines. And when we have a high tide and wave action, like at Chastor Beach there, we have log soup. And it's, and these logs become projectiles and they accelerate the erosion and they crash into docks and wharves. Like Grantham's dock was obliterated by wave-borne logs. And I believe also in White Rock, their jetty was severely damaged. So there are going to be, I think, opportunities for us to advocate to various agencies and levels of government for coordinated strategies to deal with some of these issues. Does anybody else want to pontificate? Not seeing any volunteers right at the moment. In that case, I'm going to call the question on the recommendations as presented. All those in favor? And we are all in favor. Thank you very much for presenting this. It's a meaty report. And we have lots of good topics today. Now we're coming up to an update on volumetric billing. And over to GM Rosenbaum.
Good morning again. At this May 22 committee meeting, staff provided the latest update on the volumetric billing implementation project. And staff felt it was timely to provide another update to the board, given everything that's going on. So this option, this report is primarily information and it provides an option, provides some information on the progress on the mock billing, on the update to our bylaws, as well as some timelines on when you could receive an updated bylaw, as well as the rates for 2026. And staff are here to provide any answers to questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, much appreciated. This is a topic that I get questions on regularly from members of the public. Questions, comments? I see Director Lee reaching for his mic.
Yes. I was reading on page, ooh, I don't, page one. The water rates and regulations bylaw sent out for legal review. It's just reflecting the current, is it reflecting the current mock bills we're sending out? Is that, is that what's up?
Yes, yes, that's correct. Thank you.
So just so we can legally bill that way next year? Okay, thank you.
So long as we don't have a postal strike. Corporate officer?
I'll just add on to that. So in addition to the update to the financial schedules, there will also be a modernization of the language and new provisions to contemplate around the implementation of water metering. It's an entirely, an entirely new rewrite.
Sorry, when are we going to see the entire new rewrite?
So the bylaw will come forward. We'll ensure that we align it with the rate review that's happening in Q4 this year. The intention is to bring the provisions forward for committee review initially before we bring it to board for readings. And the bylaw is, we're recommending that it comes into force and effect on January 1st, 2026.
Wow, that's pretty imminent. We're making progress. Are there further questions? Director Gabius?
Thank you. I'm glad to see that this is coming along. Huge project, always more complicated than we think. So thank you, staff, for all the good work on this. I have a question on page, well, two of item 4.4. When staff is talking about non-conforming water service connections and faulty water meters, like can I get a little bit more information? Is this part of the, what we pass, like the amendment to the budget to take care of all those big meters? Or like where, like just a bit more information about what that means? And will it require further amendments to the budget of the project?
Staff?
Thank you for the question. Happy to explain this. As part of the, in order to implement volumetric billing, every property needs to have its own water meter. Over the last 50, 60 years, there has been a lot of, there's a big variety of how water meters and where water service connections were established on properties. There are meters serving three properties. There are three properties per meter. There are properties that are picking back on another property. So for North and South Pender, we've been able to address that over the last two years. And there's still some outstanding questions, outstanding situations there. But often it requires extensive conversations with the landowners to confirm the current situation as well as to address that sometimes new right-of-ways are required, sometimes new connections are required. So it's really one-on-one working with property owners that may be not even aware of the fact that they're getting the water now from the neighbor. Because maybe three property owners prior that was established. So there's a lot of field verification and digging into our own archives required to address this.
Okay, so these properties, this is all happening in North and South Pender? These meters?
No, we had, for North and South Pender, we are almost done with the work. And this is the work that is required for the regional system, which is, of course, a way bigger amount of water meters. So, and all that work needs to be completed prior to January, January 1st, 2027.
Thank you. I am not seeing any further hands at the table. So I think we can excuse you with thanks for this report. And move on to item 4.5, status of reserves and holding funds as of August 31st. And over to staff.
This is just a semi-annual report to provide an update on the status of reserve and holding funds as at August 31st, 2025. I'd like to make note that it's pursuant to the receipt of tax reacquisition funds and the placement of those funds. I will, I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you very much. I'm looking around. I'm not seeing a lot of questions. I think most of us got thoroughly bogged down in all of the maps, in the coastal mapping report. And we haven't acquired any, there haven't been any really significant changes lately to my, yeah. This is pretty much, we're at status quo. So thank you very much. Last chance? No? Okay, then we're going to go to item 4.6, which is the state of our debt, which is declining a little bit.
It is, yes. Again, this is just another semi-annual report to update the board on the status of data obligations, as well as kind of a market update on the interest rate environment that is impacting our debt.
Okay. I'm looking for any comments, thoughts? I see the interest rates are sort of floating around 4% plus and minus, which certainly could be a lot worse, although I really wish we'd made all those big borrowing like five years ago when it was at 1%. But any further questions from staff? We're really close to paying off our recreation, regional recreation, which is, which is nice to see that off the books. So Director Inkster, who was here for the regional recreation?
You mean for the referendums, the three of them, I think we did? By the way, Seashelt was almost 70% in favor of the rec facilities. Do people know that? Hip, hip, hooray. The question I always have and the debt on the rec facilities, which is good to see, is, I always wonder what our, because I'm trying to, I can't find the figures to ask because it might be in there. And I know that I asked Tina this often last few years, what our plan is going forward then if that debt disappears? Because we have, we have capital requirements and I just, you know, it's, I just wonder. I mean, maybe it's part of that discussion on rec coming up, but I just, I always ask that question, what our capital, future capital requirements are in our plan? Thanks. Because we don't have the, Madam Chair, we don't have the social license nor the legal status anymore necessarily to have much debt, but we will have capital requirements. Thanks.
I'm going to put that over to our CFO.
So we have reports being drafted as part of the capital renewal plans that come through pre-budget. So this will be an item that will be highlighted as part of those reports. And so staff are currently working on those and options will be presented for the board's consideration in contemplation to the capital renewal plans. We also, just a reminder, have the recreation needs assessment that's also going to be underway. And so that will be contemplated as part of the staff report as well. So those two things concurrently will inform this decision.
Director Inkster?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I've been, other than environmental things, these are some of the things that I talk a lot about at this table. And the reports are coming, thanks to staff for doing that because I keep asking, you know, we need to talk about this, is, it'll be interesting to see because theoretically the debt drops off on those, on the rec facilities. It disappears from the requisition to the public. But as a board, as we go forward, we need to consider if we let it drop off or what we may have to replace it with. So these are the discussions we probably need to get our heads around just as a discussion because of usage needs and the replacement and/or upkeep of facilities. So anyway, I hope we can have a good discussion when it comes. Thanks.
Thank you. I was just looking at page, whatever I'm on in this package. But in the report, it's page four, and it's actually this Sunday that our recreation loan expires, 13th of October, 2025. Who knew? Comment from CAO?
Yeah, there's still one debt related to the recreation. It's a small, we took two security issuings, one the subsequent year for furniture fixers and equipment. So there's still a small amount. It's not completely extinguished till next year. But yeah, we're, the big component, the significant component will be dropping off.
Almost feel like we should have a little celebration.
I was going to say, do we get to burn the mortgage on this one? What's going on there?
Yes, Director Inkster?
Thanks for, I guess you're getting Director Inkster fatigue today, maybe. But that's okay. So I'm just hoping that, and staff knows this, that we built, I'm hoping that we built at least 60, 70-year buildings, but I, anyway. I don't know, maybe they're 50-year buildings, but I just hope we have because.
Thank you. We all sincerely hope the buildings will not fall down the minute the debt is paid for. So thank you very much. We're going to move on to item 4.7, which is grant status update. And I'm just going to note that in the grants received, it shows when the project completion deadline is, but it doesn't actually show when we received the grant. So when I was looking at Wood Creek Park, I had to go back to remember when we actually got the grant approved. And it took two years. We applied for that grant and it took two years to get notification that we were going to receive the grant. So this is the grant status update. Did you have anything to add?
Not beyond that, just strictly that, yeah, it's another semi-annual update on the notifications and the pending applications.
Director Bax?
Thank you. Page two of the report or page 312 of the agenda. I'm just wondering if the, so the coastal flood mapping grant is scheduled to be completed November 15th. And is, are we ahead of schedule on that? Or is it, does that include presentations that are going to be done to other agencies?
In conjunction with Manager Shay, there is still some reporting to be done before we complete final reporting to the grantor.
Thank you. Noting the pending grant applications, I realize that you don't have a crystal ball, but we have applied for $7 million for the Langdale Wellfield development. When are we hoping to hear back?
I met with UBCM during, or met with UBCM staff at UBCM and they anticipate some announcements in spring of next year.
Okay, thank you very much. $7 million is not a chump change, even at the regional district. Last chance, any questions about grants? I am not seeing anything going, going. Director Bax?
Yeah, thank you. Just wondering about the timing for the evacuation route plan grant. It says it'll be finished February 28th, 2026. Is there a timeline for a report to the board on the evacuation route plan?
CAO?
So this isn't a project update, it's a funding update. So that'll come in October with your corporate work plan update is more information related to the project. So that has gone out and has been, I think, awarded, I believe. So I'm not quite sure of the details specifically. So I can make sure staff are prepped to answer that for the corporate work plan.
Good, thank you very much. Okay, we are going to move on to item 4.8, which is the Canada Community Building Fund Works Fund update, otherwise known as gas tax, even though it isn't. Are there any questions other than, I see that Escribe did terrible things to our fonts, but we can still see how much money we have committed and how much we have uncommitted for 2025. and how much we have uncommitted for 2025. And I assume we will be talking about this at budget. Director Backs?
So I was wondering, there's a chart on 316 of the agenda. It says abandoned projects, 2025 abandoned projects. And in my area, I have an abandoned project of $26,830. And I wonder what, I don't, I don't know what that abandoned project is. If you could illuminate me.
There were several projects that were approved over 10 years ago related to active transportation. And when the standards for Mott changed, we had to abandon those projects. So those are incomplete or projects that we had to abandon because we had spent some money, but had to essentially return it back to the pots.
Because I'd still like to pursue a bike path on Lower Road, if possible. I want that to be known.
That is a new topic to discuss, perhaps at budget. I don't know, not right now, but thank you. So I think that that is done. I see no further hands. And last, but definitely not least, is our water supply update. Always a highlight, especially when it's raining.
Thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to provide the last water supply update of the year. I shared my screen, so it should be coming through. There it is. I'm starting this with a quick project update on the slides. Last year, there were some remaining items on our dam safety upgrades to the both dams. And I'm happy to present that they're all now completed, including the installation of a nice yellow line that we will see permanently on any picture for Chapman Lake and Advers Lake. And on the right side, it's hard to see, but that's the installation of the new gates in Upper Chapman Creek that were, we required to install as part of our permitting approvals for the seivens. And it's hard to see, but it's the instrumentation box. There's a solar panel mounted on the rock. And in the water, there's a little great tube, and that's the actual sensor itself. But it's in place and it's working. Moving on to the next slide. So the highlights of the summer is actually, I think, good news. Eastbourne is the only system that we're still in stage three water conservation restrictions with. And this is actually good news for, for Eastbourne, because they have not had to go to stage four this summer. For Chapman, we were lucky to not surpass stage two. For South Pender as well, and all the others, as usual, stayed at stage one. Thanks for enlarging it, Katie. So Eastbourne is still in stage three, but we will reevaluate that next week based on the current rains we are receiving. Stage two for Chapman, why we didn't need to go to stage three? I think we had a big rain event in September. In August, they did a lot of good work for us. Leak resolution was the other big one, as well as our contributions from church. In total, church contributed about 2 million liters a day. In total, it was about 13% of our total water supply that came from church, which is good news for the community. In terms of the metering, as I indicated before, we were able to do our first reads of the Seashell meters in September. We now did our October reads earlier this month. And we now are able to confirm that we have 466 properties with a potential leak, of which 92 are, have a potential leak of over 5,000 liters a day. And what we usually do, and what we were planning to do, is want to connect with all those properties that have property, potentially a leak. So there's 466 in upcoming weeks, in a form then about the fact that they potentially have leak and do that through a letter. With the current strike, that's really not an option anymore. So we are pivoting to alternate ways of connecting with those residents. The ones with the largest leaks, because we have some larger ones, we will follow up with them with a hand-delivered letter to see if we can get those resolved. We have one large leak, which is extremely large, it's over 300,000 liters, which is related to, it's a meter that was installed in June. We don't know if it's a result of the installation of the meter or something that was triggered by that installation of the meter. So we have to explore that. The fact that we didn't notice it was, it's a property adjacent to the waterfront. So the water must have gone straight into the sea and nobody ever noticed that there was that amount of water leaking. But it's huge. So we're trying to address that urgently at the moment. So all the residents that have signed up for monthly water use update within Seashell, they will receive shortly the first updates as well. So our message to the community this year was, you know what to do. So thank you for your collaboration. And we're noticing there water demand over the summer that it was relatively as usual as we had over the last several years. So we're happy with that. We are not received a lot of, our bylaw team didn't receive a lot of complaints. Follow-up on some issues, we had not, we didn't need to issue any warnings or tickets at this year to date yet. So that's, that is good news on that side as well. And I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Excellent. Such good news. I love seeing that long stage two with no red on the chart. Do we have questions about leaks or anything else? Alternate Director Dan Dred.
I don't have questions. I have comments that even though Gibson's has implemented meters, I believe over 10 years ago, we still find leaks. And it is incredible how by having them, you can find them, find leaks easily. So obviously, it's a no-brainer solution.
Great. Anyone else? Director Toth?
Thank you, Chair. Just a comment. I mean, if you look at that one slide that had the leak numbers on it, half a million liters a day potentially, that's a quarter of Church Road. Like, that's a substantial capital project that might not have needed to be funded quite as urgently. And so, yeah, when, when we have conversations with the community and people that are still, you know, resistant to the idea of metering, it's like, no, look, that's, that's a significant capital cost that might have been able to be pushed out a couple of years or other funding sources explored. So just a comment. Thank you.
Or similar to Chesterwell. Talking of which, how is Chesterwell?
Chesterwell is, when you're talking about a project update, the construction work was a little bit delayed due to some purchasing complications that, but we are, we were really happy that we had Church Road online this year to offset that demand. So it will be, project is planned to be upgraded, to be completed shortly. So it's going well.
Thank you. I asked because I passed the big hydro vac truck that was there this morning on my way here. So, but as it happened, we, we didn't have an emergency. Yay! Let's, let's enjoy it while it, while it lasts. And look, we're at the end of the agenda. There's no communications, there's no new business, there's no in-camera. But there is an adjournment. Move seconded, all in favor? And we are adjourned. And there is nobody in the real gallery. Is there anyone in the virtual gallery? No hands up in the virtual gallery. So thank you, everyone.